Find out how many of them there are.
Yeah. Follow meeting to order. Thank all you folks for being here tonight. Glad to see so many of you here. We will get our meeting underway and I'll call on Commissioner Lawwell to have our indication.
Pray with him, please. Goodbye to heaven's father as we gather here this evening to discuss the business of this county. We just ask for wisdom and guidance as we go through the agenda tonight. Lord, I just want to thank you again for what a wonderful county we have and how blessed we are to have Harris County as a home. And as we go through the agenda and make decisions, we pray, Lord, for your guidance that we would do, you would have us to do, make your decisions for the benefit of the people of this county. Thank you, Lord, for our employees that do so. Such a great job for us here. And thank you, Lord, especially for our law enforcement and public safety personnel and jobs they do for us. We just ask, Lord, that you would watch over them and protect them. While we also ask guidance for all of our political leaders, from our president on down, we also ask for special guidance and protection for military personnel both here and far. Let's call these things in place.
All right, now I have us to please stand and have our pledge of allegiance and answer our county's hard questions. And I can be just pleased to say.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the minutes from the May 5th meeting to have a motion. Motion and second. Any discussion on favor or see the final rating hands? Opposed, abstained. Reappearances of citizens. First, Mr. Carolyn Early. In Harris County Library.
And I'm going to be brief. I'm here to address the inequality or representation on the library board. There are seven trustees on the board and six of them are in District Two, which all are appointed by the payers. I would like for there to be better representation of our boards and committees as terms expire. But with educated participants, we only discovered the inconsistencies of the library board when great injustice was done to the prior library director. If the board and deputies have bylaws, they need following the bylaws and if not, some action needs to be taken to ensure all bylaws are followed. And I would love that if commissioners were communicating with us as residents and as vacancies become available to let us know because there are a lot of us out here that would love to participate and to make history in their community. And I say this from a heart, I'm sure you'll share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, anyone else want to sign up, speak on that issue?
No, sir.
All right, next is Washington Road paving. Ricky Vanoy, Kathy Vanoy, and David Pick.
Speak one at a time.
Excuse me?
Speak one at a time.
We are down to to the attorney. How do you receive any questions?
No, ma'am. Did not have an answer.
We know he is getting it. He has signed it. He's working on it in. So that leaves us with Mr. Cry. Do we have any decisions yet on Mr. Cry?
I don't guess we have heard anything official from Mr. Cry. However, Ms. Chune has kept us up to date on what is going on. We have had some preliminary discussions about it. No, no, please. We have had some preliminary discussions. Mr. Cry is the last house.
There's no house, just land.
The last property on that end of Washington Road. Assuming we get to 29th End, which is assumed.
We will.
Assuming he's telling you properly.
I can assure you that he talked to me and he's 100% for this. And he said, "I'll come to some of the committee meetings, DB and all that. He's just very busy. Got a couple of kids." And he's definitely on board.
Good. That will then leave us, if he continues, if Mr. Cry continues to say no, or no price, or yes at a price, that leaves us with a decision. It would be very easy for us to go ahead and paint the road except up to his property. That would leave a gap between Morgan Colton Road and his property. The rest of it will be told, but that's one option. The other would be to try and reach agreement with him as to what he wants with the property. We will we will be proceeding probably with first option.
Pardon?
We'll probably proceed with the first option.
Why can't you take the property?
That's what I said. That's the other option. We can't. We can't take it without paying for it, but we can go ahead and take the property and move ahead. And I think that's what we, I know that's what we would do. We would take the property and move ahead.
So what, we found the engineer yet? You got the engineers out there yet?
I, Greg, we don't have the engineer at this point in time.
Why not?
We don't have a county engineer in the process of hiring.
We will.
And we're going to have to contract out.
We will. We will get an engineer to come in and do that.
I don't understand what the hold up here. We have 28 Ds already.
We told you earlier, sir, and I'm not going to argue the point with you. We are moving ahead. We've got two options left right now. We're going to move ahead. But we could not move ahead until we got to this point. We have 29 signatures and there's one piece of property left and that happens to be the end, then we can move ahead. And that's what we're going to be doing.
Could I ask you one question?
Okay.
And I don't know if I'm right or wrong, so just to state this. I mean, I'm trying to find the solution. We have done everything on our side. I mean, we've worked with y'all tremendously with this. But now we're at a point where we would love to see something take place and we're just.
We're at that point too, sir.
Okay. Why can't we just pave the road as it is right there? You already have it, isn't that correct? We don't have to follow DOT if I'm not mistaken. Have to. Am I wrong or right?
DOT is not involved. This is a county road.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So why can't we? We've been doing it for years riding on that part. Why can't we just continue but have it paved? It would make it safer being paved. We've been doing it for years without it. I mean, I'm just trying to come up. That's one of the worst parts of the road, right there at that bottom.
I don't, Mr. Taylor, I don't know that we can pave it on some, we can't move it. You're right, but where it now lies.
What you have done is made the decision quite some while ago is that if you're going to pave a road, you want to fee simple title. An absolute title as opposed to some type of prescriptive rights in the road. And that's where you have, what you've done is that every one of the roads, you go ahead and get the title to it and then you pave it as opposed to it just being an easement, a prescriptive right.
If we paved it where it lies now on his property, what are his rights?
If, if, if you pave where it is traveled, you've got some sort of, you know, some sort of rights at least by prescription. But that just means basically, you know, a use easement, you've used it over a period of time and maintained it. If you ever cease to do it, then it reverts back to the adjoining property on it up to the center line of the road. But, you know, and what you don't want to do is invest that money in paving it and then all of a sudden have him come in and say, "Well, you know, this road is not yours." You know, and the prescriptive rights don't flow to you or, you know, and you have to litigate and issue that.
But that's on his portion, right?
It's, well, it's on any portion of it that you don't have to deal with. But I think over the years, what you've done is done is to pay sure that you have gotten a fee simple title to every piece that you're going to pave. And that way you own the road and you know where the rights away are. And you can always get into the issue of, well, you know, no, the road doesn't run that way. You came over here and you don't have prescription rights on this part that you paved. It should have been somewhere else. And so I, you know, there are other ways to go about it. You know, certainly you can condemn if you wish to, you know, acquire it that way. And then we have one or two had, I think, filed a condemnation on them, but yet we've had a general war on some type of arrangement as far as the cost of the right of way. That's the ultimate way you would end up taking it is with a condemnation action, which you, by doing that, you file a declaration of taking. You take it at that point in time, it becomes yours. And then the issue then after that becomes and goes to a special master, the deal with the Superior Court as to what the value of the property is, fair market value. And I would, you know, I don't think that if you're going to have a road in this, I'm aware, I don't remember where his property is ended.
It's on the very end, one end of the road. And the change in the road that affects all these other people. At that particular point at his property line, the new road is the same as the old road where it meets it. Then it turns away to get around that curve or go straight.
Yeah, straighten that curve out. I mean, we've had situations where I remember one where a man right in the middle of the road said, "I'm not giving my property." Everybody else had done it and it was like right in the center of the road held everything up. Because he didn't want the trees cut after. But eventually he came around and, you know, conveyed his interest in the road was paved.
Now, I was just going to say, for the sake of argument, let's just say, hypothetical, Mr. Cry says by the end of June, let's just say he says okay. Or he doesn't say okay and we decide to go one way or the other.
That's a decision you've got to make?
Right. But let's just say for the sake of argument that he says by the end of June, okay. All right, can somebody give me a timeline as to how much time we're talking about before these residents can see any type of work out on Washington Road?
He signs the deed by the end of June, I don't know if I'm going to prefer that county manager.
We would have to, we've got the survey done, so the engineering is pretty basic. Set up what we need as far as space. Finder, paving, set up, I mean, the, we would have, it should already, is it already state? I think it's already state, so we've already got our.
Can you do some surveying?
We've already got our.
Three times. It's been surveyed three times.
That's not what I asked. I said, are the states there?
Okay, how long would the engineer portion take? That's all I want. I just would like to get a timeline.
These folks want to know when they're going to have the road paved.
Right, that's what, and generally, how long would it take from the time Mr. Cry says, "Okay, fine, I'll have a road paved"? So from there.
Well, we're going to start working on the engineering situation next month anyhow, whether he says yea or nay, be ready to go. I anticipate probably going to be later than the first of August, so we're done by end of September with all the paving projects. We're not going to just do your road. That's very, not cost effective. We've got three other roads and perhaps a fourth. So we want to package them all in one package this summer so you could get fixed, fix back three bucks.
But say the other two are not ready to go this summer.
We've got three other ones for Alcalma County, so those are ready to go.
Okay, so the timeline we're looking at is the engineer would be next month, the engineer work next month, and how long would that take? Approximately.
It shouldn't be too much because the road's already been surveyed.
What's too much? How long will that take approximately?
I'm not an engineer.
I know you're not, but you're a county manager.
I would give him 40 hours to work on it, so.
Okay, so one week. So that'd take approximately.
No, and I think what Ms. Langs is trying to say to you is we wait, why, we just want to see some positive things. You know, we've got a lot of lip service, not to be offensive, and it's been put off and put off. Because the last time we said, you said, "Well, Martha said, 'We can't give you a timeline,' but you did give us a timeline." That last time I talked, you did.
It was August.
Yeah. And you said, "We're going to start on it in the spring."
See, what I don't want to see happen is that we have three roads that are ready to be paved. When's the last time we paved a road? You may know?
This last time we paved them going into the Business Park.
Yeah, well, I did two roads last.
We haven't, we haven't paved roads.
Not resurfaced, new roads.
Okay, yeah, new roads.
We did a new road in the Business Park.
Well, in the, okay, but how about?
About 2006.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Oh, yeah. So I don't want to see us get to the end of the quote-unquote paving season and these folks and the other two roads, the people that live on the other two roads have seen no activity. And that's what I want to, pretty clear.
The last time we were told is too cold.
Correct, and that's my.
And we're going to get close to that again, is what we're getting. Now, we're doing it last September. We were.
I don't want to get.
Last time, yeah, but you don't want to get, it's going to be late.
Pardon, pardon?
It's going to be late if it ends before October's over.
No, that's what I'm saying. I just don't want it to get to the cold season and we haven't even started.
Correct, and that's, that's. That's my issue, is that I want to make sure, and I know this is in Martha's district, but one of those other two roads ought to be in District Three, which is my district. So I'd like to see some activity there too, and I don't want to see us get down the road and then all of a sudden we have to tell these residents, "Oh, it's too, we can't do it, it's too cold," so it'll be next year. That's why I work for.
I agree.
So if we have 29 Ds in hand, then, then we can go ahead and pave and everything should be completed by October driving on the pavement to, at least to a pro, it sounds good to me.
One, the only question is the last block.
Right, but just let's say.
Whether it's paved or not paved.
Well, yeah, but either way, that will hold up.
It won't hold up, it won't hold up the rest.
I didn't know if I understood that. We don't own that part of the, I said, we, y'all, Cindy Kelly doesn't own that part of the road that Cry has? We don't own it now?
Fee simple, no. It's called, what's called a prescriptive easement, which basically means after seven years you can easement it over and over again. You have a prescriptive right, but you don't have a D.
It's not in writing, but the public has the right to.
It's the same.
They say the public have the right to pave it too, but.
Let me give you a different analogy because I'm trying to keep away from lawyer speak.
Thank you.
If you had a neighbor's property that you had to drive through to get through to your property and you did it for X number of years, you have a prescriptive right to that, but you do not own that. This is the same situation.
Like a right of way.
Yes.
But you can put gravel on it, so why can't you put asphalt on it? And you can break it?
We only own.
All right, look, if you're giving us a date, that's what we're looking at. That's all. You know, we don't want to come up here every Tuesday, but we are frustrated.
No, no offense.
You don't want us.
I'll say, I would love to see you here every day.
Thank you, Becky. I appreciate it.
Let me, let me explain one thing. To pave takes, would take up the entire width of what's there properly, but then we have to have ditches as well so you have proper drainage, which it's not a practical matter to pave just what's there. It's still have proper drainage and stuff.
Understood. But where it is, it's just going down the hillside anyway, so you don't have any drains. I don't go have any of them.
But you don't want the asphalt to end up crumbling and going down the hill here.
No, that's fine. We're not here, we're here to have a road paved. That's what we're after. And we've been doing it for 20 years.
And we appreciate the work y'all have put into it very much. It's been very helpful.
Do you have any folks on these property?
We, they don't even live on the property. We don't see them. I used to talk to old man Cry when he was alive. He's giving it to somebody else, a family member or something. I have no idea who it is. It's, well, I mean, we don't see, and that's probably the worst part of the road when you're coming down. The ditch gets bumpy and jumpy and that's where those buses, school buses have problems too.
I'm just thinking 28, I mean, Colvin and MIA. Can you give them a phone?
I couldn't find a phone. I couldn't call them. I understand, as though that, I think when Morgan Colton was done too, they, they gave you a hard time too and wanted money, basically. I'm just going to say it like it is. So I don't think Colvin's going to do anything. I think he's after this right here.
So.
But we will try.
I think we'll pressure him.
Mr. Wood, you said we don't have a county engineer? So you have to contract the engineer now?
We have engineers that work for us, consulting engineers, and we'll just, if we don't have an engineer, we'll just go to the local consulting engineer.
So when will you, or whoever has to do it, get an engineer, get in touch with an engineer and get a bid from him and have him do whatever you have to do?
I think he indicated we have to.
June.
June.
Because I've got other roads I need to get done and I, I mean, it's all part of timeline of a bunch of stuff I have to be done. It's just all part of one package.
So I'm worried that before my new June engineer should be done.
By the end of June. I want to have a bid package ready for everything.
Then you have, and then, then you will let the bid out? How long will that take?
Two weeks.
This has to be out for two weeks?
Who's the little rep or the county or the?
The show po and all that stuff that has to be done.
We've already got the surveys, the ones that that stays on some of the time. Mr. Brown's crew is pretty busy right now, so it made us contract a little sheet match because we also have another project, CDBG program, project going on that they're already behind a law.
That sounds great. I'd love to see you do that, so.
So we're looking.
We don't want to wait on the county again.
So we're looking to mid-August before everything is ready to be paved.
Right, and you'll be, when they come in there to pave, it's three days till we can do that job. It's for, you know, those big paving companies. They'll be in and out and you'll go. Thank you very much.
All right, back to Mr. Cry. What timeframe are we going to give him to say yea or nay or? What timeframe are you going to use to say, "You don't have any more time. We're going to do this," whatever you decide to do, and when are you going to decide what you're going to do?
John, if, if, if condemnation, if we go to a condemnation, then you get a certain amount of time for this part.
The condemnation, yeah.
Yeah, how long is that?
I don't, I don't know.
But that won't slow the project down.
You can, you know, what, this is a, highways are different than, than other kind of, other inland domain projects. And once you file the, and this goes in front of a special master, it is less onerous than if you wanted to come out here and condemn a piece of property to build a building. And, but to go for a special master and, you know, once you file the declaration of taking, and you'll have, before that, you'll authorize the condemnation to defile and declare it to be a public purpose in the road. And then at that point in time, we file a declaration of taking in Superior Court, a special master's appointed. And then once the special master's appointed, then the, then the, you acquire the title to the, to the road yourself. I mean, it comes automatically by operational law to you. And then you go ahead with your project. And then the issue then remains, what's the cost? What's the fair market value that you owe him for, for the property he's giving to the road?
And that's what the master would do.
Yeah, and that does not affect the, the building and the construction of the road.
But it's effectively, we would have to condemn if we wanted to put the road in its new location.
Yes.
And that's what we would have to condemn.
Either that or you'd get him to.
To agree.
Yeah, to agree to it. And, you know, it may be that it's, it's better to pay him something for it and not go through the process because it's going to cost you money to go through the process.
All right. So I think we need to move properly ahead with that, with that determination.
You need to go to him and say, "Okay."
Because it would cost to pave the whole thing, obviously, and then leave that one unpaid.
So you say we need to go to him and say, "Don't let him decide how much you're going to give him or you're going to give him."
Say, you need to go.
Yeah.
So y'all.
Yeah.
And say, "Okay, this is what the board has decided that we will give you for your land. Do you accept it or not?" And if he says no, then you go with the condemnation. If he says yes, then you go. During all this time, engineers still can come out and take care of everything.
And let the bid.
And go ahead and let the bid. Everything can be done while this other stuff is taken care of. Mr. Cry's.
Yeah, but I don't know that it would be wise. We can let the bid, but we may wait on a notice to proceed a week or two if we're still going through legal issues, just to make sure that we.
But once he says no, if that's what he says, and you say condemn, two weeks ago you said, as soon as he said, you say, "Okay, we're going to condemn," it would be immediately.
Then it would, yeah, once we condemn, once we condemn, that's it and it's going to go that route that we wanted on.
Does that mean once you say we're going to condemn or once you go through the paperwork? How long does the paperwork take approximately?
It's kind of like asking how long's the string. It should be, you know, we have condemned before. It, we've got the format, I don't know what the format is, but once you, once you file the notice of condemnation, which we've already got the survey, and once you file the notice of condemnation, you know what, what property you're looking for. And then from there, there is a, the statute provides it goes to a special master. But the filing of the condemnation, you request a declaration of taking, which means that the property is transferred to you. And then the rest of it, the value of the property and whether or not you, you know, you can get in the battle of appraisers, you know, that doesn't have anything to do with.
So it basically just depends on how long the paperwork takes?
Yeah, to get, you know.
Yeah, we don't have to wait till the master sets the value. That, once we, what's with, file condemnation, it's filed and we can engineer on that portion and move, move right ahead.
So somebody needs to, from the county, needs to talk to Mr. Cry, find out what he wants?
That's the first step we need to do.
And who would that be? Would that be Ms. Chune since she is?
I haven't been communicating with her. Not there yet.
Well, we just need to get a yester, no, I think. I mean, really.
That's not going to hold up what's the rest of the word. No matter what he says, yes, no, whatever, it's not going to hold up proceeding like we're talking about.
That's true. However, it might hold up letting the bid if we're going to stop at his land. So we need a timeline of when we will actually file condemnation.
There are ways, there's ways I could work with to do that in the bid called add alternates. So, I mean, I can deal with that within a reasonable amount of time.
So we can go ahead, no matter what happens with Mr. Cry, you can go ahead and get an engineer out there and then let the bids right now tomorrow.
I've got a whole bunch of stuff to do.
You didn't expect me with any of it?
Come on at eight, well, I got rotary tomorrow morning by 8:30.
Where at? Your office? I'll be there.
We've got a department at eight, nine. You can sit in there.
So you, basically, you told us last, you told us tonight that by the end of June, engineering would be done and then you got two weeks to, after that, that bids would be let, you know, two weeks to get them back in?
Those were some minimum times we did, two week things, so.
Yeah, well, maybe the end of June is, for the engineers, that's a whole month.
We would love for you to push this out, really push this.
No, no, I'm just saying some, some things are not.
I know.
They're not, I know, they're not all written stone, just paper.
We're not only that, but again, it's been 20 years now. We're not only that, but again, but they've been twenty years now, twenty years we've been talking about this road, and that's not, that is not a lie.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, well, the timeframe in one more week, we can handle that, is what I'm saying.
That's why I want to be, be a little bit.
But not six months.
We are all under agreement that we will have this road paved before winter.
Before the first snowfall, absolutely.
Thank y'all.
No, that doesn't count, that doesn't count.
Yes, you will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anything else we need to do, just call.
Thank you.
Not for that. So, we've got a bunch of people signed up for the topics, number six, eight, and nine.
Mr. Chairman, I have five, I've had some discussions with the sheriff, and he is still on his ride, last I talked to him, he was in, I guess, maybe we can put this off one more meeting, if you want us to go ahead and pay the bill, and then figure out where it's going to come from, please go ahead and direct us, how you'd like us to do that.
I think we'd like to pay that fund enough, we know the funds are there, it's just, I would say let's pay it, because that's my opinion, anybody disagree with that?
Just table the discussion, the discussion of the source of the funds.
Hey, Chris, don't table that, you've already tabled ones. Just have him watch the gym table.
She was going to table.
That's why, that's how, that's true, that's my understanding, that.
And I'm not allowed to table.
You can request it to be tabled. I can't, I prefer it to be tabled. I mean, just, just so that we can discuss, to be sure that it's back on the agenda to discuss, and, and find the sources on it.
All right, but you don't, you're not, you don't want to table the paying one?
No, 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 not, not.
I'm fine with that, and we'll just have that discussion with the sheriff in our next meeting, and, and John's already done the research on the legalities involved, so, okay.
So, you're tableing?
I'll, I'll table the.
Source.
The source, discussion, but not the paying of it.
Can we give a motion?
I don't need a motion, you can pay, John, just consensus?
Yeah, I think yes.
Okay, consensus?
Would you, or you offer us?
Thank you.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, consensus, do you have paying, funds, June second? All right, number six is clarification, read the east section of the cemetery in Hamilton.
I have requested that to be put on the budget, I mean, on the, on the agenda, because it's come to my attention that there has been some confusion, misunderstanding, whatever, as far as the role of the Hamilton Cemetery Association, and I just felt that it was important to be sure that the public was aware that the role of the Hamilton Cemetery Association, it is a private, not-for-profit organization that was begun, if, if I, I don't have all the little details, but from what I've gleaned, it was started many, many, many years ago by people who had family members in the west section of the cemetery, and they just wanted to be sure that their family members' graves were being looked after, and, and looking on down the line, if they were gone, who was going to be looking after them, so they formed an official cemetery association, from everything I've seen, it was done right, there were deeds, there were surveys to the different tracts of land that they owned, and their obligation was to those tracts of land. As with our neighbors, they may do something to their property we don't like, you can't go on to your neighbor's property, whether it's to do something good or bad, and that's the situation of the Hamilton Cemetery Association, they're charged with a particular tract of land, the property to the east is not included in what the cemetery association owns, so they cannot go on to that property and do anything, and I think there's been, like I said, misunderstanding or confusion, thinking that the Hamilton Cemetery Association doesn't want to do anything, or adverse to something, it's, it's what they have a legal right to do, and, and they do have an obligation to the property that is under their charge, and they have given, from what I've seen through many years, very selfless, people who are no longer living, as well as those who have taken over the mantle from other family members who've passed on, they've given very selflessly to what their charge is in maintaining the cemetery and trying to solicit some funds. Well, in the property owned by the Hamilton Cemetery Association, there is an unbelievably nominal fee when people want to be buried there to help with perpetuating the, the maintenance of the property, and then there are deeds that are drawn, so that everything is very clear, well organized for their tract, so, everything I've seen through many years has been well handled, and I just felt that people needed to see that the Hamilton Cemetery Association is not an adverse organization as far as what the issue is with the east cemetery, that apparently has not been maintained, I'm not aware of any deeds, any sale, any lots there, or any obligation by any organization to maintain it, I don't know if people thought, well, they want to, they want to maintain it, wonderful if they do, but if they don't, cemetery's becoming states of disrepair, and there were, like, a misalot, or a handful of people that were willing to give up their time and energy and money to maintain at least where their family members were, and that's where the Hamilton Cemetery Association is, so, I commend the association for the work that they have done, and just feel that it should be clarified that they're, they're not the adversary here with this issue, that we're, we're trying to resolve, we have to understand all of the issues.
Thank you. Who, who had signed up?
Alex Garrett, Jim Gilliam, Don Newberry, Anson Farley, Andrea McNally, and Jill Rains.
All right, y'all, y'all, as one group speaks one group, or have a spoken, or do each of you wish to speak on it?
I'm happy with the statement, it's just my.
You're happy with the statement, just. And you are?
Alex Garrett.
Alex Garrett, what about the others who'd say?
Harry, I'm Don Newberry, and Martha said it very well, we basically came to listen to make sure things were not going to be set out of line, and I don't think Martha did, she did a excellent job, but I'd like to hear what the other people might say.
All right, any of the rest of you that signed up, have anything to say?
Can the three of us come up?
Did, did you, y'all, y'all signed up also?
Yes, sir.
Certainly you may. One, okay.
Comments one to nine?
Yeah, one, yeah, one, one at a time, as far as comments concerned, but you can all come up and sit if you wish. And if you would, state your name and your address, and we have, each of you will have five minutes.
I'm Ramon Bob, I'm up here, it's not saying that they should clean the Hamilton Cemetery, the Hamilton Cemetery, that's okay, they had the foresight to see this, on what you were calling the east side, is known as the Black Door, they did not have the foresight to see this, ninety-five percent of the people that down there, their people are dead, and the other five percent are older than me, now I keep my family's portion clean, and, how do you say it, all I want is a little help to clean the whole cemetery, that's all I'm asking, the help clean, and I thought by coming here, asking y'all, I could get a little help, that's all, I just don't want it bush hogged, it gonna have to be bush hogged first, then regular lawn mowers, and once we can get it down to a normal level, I see to that it stays that way, if, if I have the equipment, like I keep my family, that's all, and I, that's all, I want help, just want help with that.
Next, who's name and address?
I got a name.
What's your address, sir, your address?
One thirty-eight miles from Buick Court.
Thank you.
See, because when that cemetery was in use, the, the Blights people here in Hamilton had Hudson and this cemetery, okay, Friendship decided to buy some land and have a church cemetery, okay, that took, took away from, and this cemetery went neglect, neglect, you know, no, nobody going now, nobody going, and before you realize, it didn't got out hanging, and I'm just want to try to straighten it up, that's all.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt real quickly, we want bush hog down there, there are, there are graves down there that are marked strictly with just an upright stone, I don't want it, you know, we can't go in there, it would damage those graves.
I'm, what's the, the main section going down through there, is a mill, that mill can be bush hogged, but all the other, and, the graves that are in the trees, where the trees have come up, that is, I don't know how other folks think about it, so, I leave that alone, because trees and tuck over, it's just the main part right there where the trees hadn't tucked over, see, because on the east side, going back towards one mill road, there's a strip of land there, I don't know how, how the people bought it, and be of houses on it, but those, that whole area was nothing but cemetery, it was, from the corner, y'all, excuse me, my pack hurt, man, I'd do better if I stand up a little bit, from Susan, you know, where the corner of the road used to be it before y'all bought, before they bought the rest of the land for the cemetery, okay, from the corner of that road, all the way down to where the heart of it is belonged to my uncle, okay, in that woods, he couldn't find because his mother had let people be buried all down through there, and you can't tell me where those houses at that ain't graves, all that wood was full, and then you come back around, going back down coast to Health Department, grave, 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 all the way back around, I'm mainly concerned with what you see from the road, that in the woods, I think it'll take heaven and hell to clean it up, but that is just, that is just that part there, if I could get help with that, you won't get nothing out of me, I don't, I don't come up here, I just need help.
Thank you.
My name is Jill Rains, I live at two-six-two Madison Way in Otting, and I'm friends here with Andrea, and my husband.
Francis, could you just pick up just a little bit of music? I'm just starting here, and I think there's some folks in the back that might like to share.
Thank you. No problem. Andrea and I are friends, we lived on Fort Benning at one point, before we came to Harris County, and our sons played together in the woods, and we're both genealogists, I've been a genealogist for over eighteen years, and have surveyed many cemetery, documented them for different counties in the south, I have family members in the, in Vermont, and I just went through this last summer, some are buried next to Calvin Kuvish, in California, I have all sorts of family members there too, so I've been through a lot of gravesites, and I have never seen one, and such a sad scene, and disappear, and we ended up talking about it one day, about, have you been up there, and, yes, I have, have you seen it, and we just, it breaks your heart, because it shouldn't be that way, you wouldn't want your family members to have to try to lay through net high weeds just to pay tribute to your family members, when there's a fence and across the way, it's all pretty nice, and because I'm a genealogist, I got into the records and looked, you can just go online and look on all the county records, Q Public, you know, look that up, and what we noticed was that the part with the fence, that fence isn't the line, and it's in question, and so we started questioning and digging, and we wanted to just find out, because it's just not right that family members would, would go to see their loved ones, like me, a hundred years later, and see an open crypt with their family members, remains out in the open, it's just not right, and I would think that y'all would care about the county to try to resolve this issue, and that's what I'm here, because I'm just wanting to, to be out in the forefront, and to let someone know, and say, there's people out there that care, my whole family, I have eight children, my husband, we were out there sweating, getting bid, you know, scrapes and scratches, just so that that could be taken care of, and here we are, two years later, and we're all grown up over again, and we work really hard to just try to do that for someone else's favor, you know, but you should be able to walk through a cemetery and see the graves and not have a problem.
Thank you.
My name is Andrew McNally, my address is nine-twenty-five Morgue, fifteen hundred, Hamilton, and I can't hear you speak because on a night about two and a half years ago, I put my son into the cemetery, I only saw one sign, we pay respect and care attention no matter where we go, we're a military family for twenty years, upon going to the back of the cemetery, I noticed a fence and overgrowth, and we went to them and saw us, we were soldiers, that's all we saw, so we tried to find a gate, just thinking it was an older section, we walked around, found entrance through the woods, and we approached more soldiers, and at the time, there was a twelve-year-old child that started crying, sleeping, United States veterans that served this country and fought for it, that was, his whole thing in his still is here to this day, it's not about color, he doesn't see a property on, he sees human beings that are being disrespected, and that is what it's about, it's paying respects to both sides, and the day when we cleaned, we actually went back, we put United States flags on every single soldier's graves in the entire cemetery, the white side, the east side, the west side, north, south, you name it, we went to them and we cleaned all respects, there is broken, huge issues fatal, the court records show, part of those, including Louisville and Jimmy Coles, according to the records, are on the side of the association, his family is on that side, according to these records, the hugest part in the back section he's referring to, there are hundreds and hundreds of slaves, I stood in Port House, Paul's apartment, reading the cell of those slaves, those are unmarked, the state attorney, Georgia state attorney, has given permission for us to fill in certain holes as long as we keep a block to mark, unacknowledged, a human being rest there, that can be done, I have tried to cover, I have taken weeks of vacation, I have plaques, and you're right, trustees did a wonderful job, it started a very long time ago, I have traced it from the eighteen hundreds, trustees up until nineteen eighty-three. Trustees up until nineteen eighty-three, when the association and Mr. Farley let me know that the whole cemetery has started going into ruins. And that's why Alex and his family started trying to take care of their section. I believe them right too, I have never put them down. I know they hang up obligation, I see what their obligation says, but that needs to clarify, I also help them. So the perception doesn't go negative against that association. It is sad that it can't be looked and maybe turned into a perpetual care as one cemetery where it could fall under state fund, grants could be given, volunteers, a trust built, and the worry of everybody going dying, going away, and it falling apart. That would help protect that. I would like that looked at and worked with Mr. Garrett and Mr. Newberry, any county, the city, everybody. I don't like it being looked at as a race name, it is not, it is respect, human respect. And there is an open thread, and it really concerns me because nobody, my child shouldn't go somewhere, nobody deserves to see that. So whatever it takes, I beg for you, I will go to everybody, I can give you the list, I've started through the state, I've already started seeking grants to help the entire cemetery. I'm not picking this side, it is one cemetery to me, and those aren't heritage people.
Can I ask a question on your grant research? Can you get a section or portion of each cemetery, or our cemetery, put on the historic press or the national register and therefore be available for grant funds?
Yes.
How much research have you done on that?
Quite a bit, and I'm actually working, and I have for over two years, with Rachel Black. She's the Georgia State Deputy Archaeologist. And she has gave me a ton of information on the steps to take for all of that. I have talked to the Georgia State Association of Cemeteries, the cemeteryan boards for the state. The, actually, there is an attorney that has to get involved, one DOT, was in the cemeteries. He gave me a laundry list of rats to take, to try to get help. But that's one thing everybody points back to because it is seen not just here in Georgia, it's seen everywhere. Where cemeteries fall through. One way to try to fix it is turning it into a perpetual care. However, that would take both parties because it requires ten acres. And from the parcels that I see, the slave graves and a lot of the graves in the back, that belongs to the city, according to the tax records. There's a street on the backside of the west cemetery that belongs to the city leading back, which goes toward treatment plant. But to do a perpetual care, it has to be a minimum of ten acres. It also has to have a trust fund deposit of ten thousand dollars. I'm a good bear. And if that were taken and helped alleviate?
Well, I'm thinking one, one other aspect is, because of the historic ramifications, that it could be something that would be an attraction, actually, for cemetery tours, which would help then in turn fund it. Uh, but things need to be addressed like you talked about. I did not see the open crypt when I was there, I was, perhaps wasn't looking in the right place, but I've seen lots of something graves.
It's there.
Uh, no, I have to, I was, I was not quite dressed the way I wanted to be when I was going out there, but, though, the something graves definitely need to be addressed properly because otherwise you don't know there's a grave there.
Correct.
Um, a lot of issues, and I think, you know, I'm, I'm, I know I have an interest in it, but it really depends on a lot of other legal things that need to be resolved by commission.
And I agree, there is, there is actually a Spanish-American war soldier that a lot of people were interested in finding about messages of volunteers that are buried back there. There's a lot of history back there. But I also wanted to let everybody know, there is another gentleman that's buried back there on the far east side toward those houses, and his name is Juan Martinez. And I'm telling you this because I never saw the cemetery as a white section or a black section. And here to show that, he's white, he was buried in nineteen eighty-six. It's a cemetery. It's graves, it's people, that's all it is.
Yeah, he was buried by, he, he was, he was a prison out here.
And he's white.
I think it's more of a poppers type situation as opposed to a race thing.
Well, they brought one, about six guys out there, and they dug two graves at one time. And, um, I know they had to dig, they dug six feet because there was no vault or nothing to put them in, because when they brought them back the next morning, they was in boxes, uh, tin boxes. They put up iron cross, and it should, your record should show that it was three. Because later on, about a year later, they buried another one, and right there in the same spot. And you can walk back, if you're going back to the woods, walking straight back to the woods, on your right-hand side, you see three metal crosses. That's what they were made out at the prison camp, the prison camp made. The guy out at the prison camp made those crosses, and that's how they marked those graves.
Thank you.
I just, you know, what concerns me is, and I've stated this before, and I'm going to state it again. We have a group of Harris County residents who are trying to do good for Harris County. They're willing to put in their time, their effort, and there's another group. And I guess I don't understand, because I probably knocked the sharpest knife in the drawer, but I don't understand why this is so complicated and why it's taken this group this long to be able to do something. All they want to do is to do something good for the community. So if somebody can answer me, I'd appreciate it.
Show them the land. I'm showing them where the graves are and the land.
I appreciate it.
Sir, what, what's your question?
My question is why, that we have a group of people, a group of Harris County residents who want to do something good for the community, and why it is so complicated. What is key, I mean, that they can't?
We can't, we can't hear what it is they are going to do. We cannot make out.
This is the issue, and this is what I, I tried to get a message to you, but they can't, Newberry.
No, ma'am, you have mine.
I'll address that, but this, this discourse can't be between them and.
All, all of this is, is as I stated, the records that are shown in the tax office and where that fence line is, that five point one acres, these people that we went to care for are in there. So as you said, you cannot go on other people's property. His family, according to the tax records, are on the association's property. That's been our problem, in September, it will be three years that I have been trying to get help to clean up the whole entire cemetery, and I offer him help. I would seek help from everybody to try to help because I understood they have limited funding. A lot of people don't come to their meetings. But, but that's the actual problem, is the ownership and the records, and that's what I've said the whole time. If it's not correct and he has property records, why isn't the tax office correcting that for him so we can move forward?
She's raised several issues, one of which is ownership of the, of the land and to do something as far as getting it part of a national registered thing, it has to be at least ten acres. That particular side of the cemetery does not have the required acreage. Uh, the other thing, uh, that she wants to do is be able to help in the cleanup of the east side of that cemetery or the entire cemetery for that matter. Uh, so that, what I would suggest, I think, is that, and I don't know whether you've had discussions with them or not, uh, I think that might be, just, just talk to them and see if, if maybe some of the things you want to do, they might be willing to accept as far as, as any maintenance or that kind of stuff.
It's not just up to us, it depends on the donors.
I, I understand that, but, but it has to start with the discourse. And, and I think you need to understand what she wants to do and what's required, uh, to get that accomplished and see if it's something that you can work together on.
But if the part that's in disrepair is on the association land, why isn't the association taking care of it? That's the main question.
I don't know that. I, I think that's something that will have to be, we can't.
It shows it distinctly on the tax records that you, you really have to deal with the surveys. I'm not saying the tax records are wrong, but you have to deal with all the surveys. And there are disclaimers, you know, when you go on that website, so to, to be positive, it would be the survey lines. So who's going to be in charge of finding the survey lines? To make sure that what the tax records show online, I mean, it's not like this is a, like, right here and then right here line. It's like from here to over there line. It's a big, it's a big spot where American soldiers are behind this fence that doesn't get taken care of. It shows that that is on the land that belongs to the association. That's the question.
That's the first I've heard of that.
Well, it's.
John, I ask you, you've done some work on this.
Yes, and I, you know, the, I, in, I can't in two seconds explain all this. There was a, a, a located deed back in eighteen fifty-nine, it came into the interior court, which was an acre and a half, uh, for a few views for cemetery purposes. The interior court is now, was your, is your predecessor, it's changed it over, over the years. Now, that deed even refers to other graves, uh, that have, were, were there. Uh, and so I am not convinced that, that, uh, all of this property belongs to the, uh, the county. Somehow or another, uh, as has been an opinion expressed. I, I believe that some of it may belong to the Hamilton Cemetery Association. I think some of it may, some, there may be some graves, uh, on, on the property that's owned by the city of Hamilton. Uh, there is a war works that they own south of there, a big strip of property. What we need to do is survey that line and find out where the Hamilton city, the city, uh, uh, the line is. And then you can be able to tell, once that surveyor runs that line, where there are graves on what side of it. And then determine exactly where the Hamilton Cemetery Association, what they acquired, you know? And it appears that, uh, you know, that, that the line is, uh, is, uh, a, a somewhat crooked line. I think that's right, the fence line, in front of it, uh, is, uh, there's, there's a tree line that has been, is there and it's been, I think, been cut up until there, uh, that, and so I, I think that's where we need to start, is to get a definitive plan as to what the Hamilton Cemetery, uh, Association has, where the, and, and where the, the Hamilton property is, and see if there are any graves on the Hamilton sideline. And if it's, if it's all, you know, and if it's on the county property, then the county's got an obligation. But if it's known on the city, uh, then, or in the Hamilton Cemetery Association property, then, then, then I think that's where the obligation lies. But I think the issue is a community issue, as to how do we solve this problem? You know, if we can put it under one, 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 and this has been my thought all along, put it under one entity to manage the whole thing, then it would be a lot easier. Take, you can take the fence down, I don't think you can necessarily cut trees and, and do all that stuff because once you start doing that, then you start disturbing graves. And, uh, and so you've got to create a bigger mess. But at least you can keep it cut, you can keep, uh, that entity, you can keep it, uh, the, the undergrowth down with nothing more than, uh, weed eaters. And, uh, and, and then the, the, the public that, uh, and people that have an interest in the cemetery can get back there to, you know, to see. Now, the law says that you have, everybody has an implied easement across property to get to a grave, to get to a cemetery. So, uh, you know, you can't just say, well, the, you know, Uncle Joe's buried out here in the woods and I'm selling this property to somebody else, you can't come out here and see. Uh, yes, you can, uh, you know, and it may take, it may take some doing, but the law says you have a right to get into, to, uh, the, the family members have a right to get back to that, to that, that, uh, that cemetery. So, but I think that is, the first issue is, is where the, where the city line is, where the cemetery line is, and see if we can figure out where, how, and these deeds are a little fuzzy because, like I said, eighteen fifty-nine, that came in, uh, and how it got into the Hamilton Cemetery Association, that's another, another question, I haven't been able to find some sort of way to enter it. But we, i- if we have to survey, it would make things a lot easier to do and, and stop all the speculation and say, well, this is on us based on them or whatever.
Was the county willing to take on that whole project? Was the county willing to take on the whole area?
I think, we got to do the survey first.
Yeah, we got to do the survey first.
But if you, then you're still dividing it up.
Well, no, we, we, we know who's got, who the players are then at that point in time. If you, if the county owns it all, the county's got an obligation.
But you said one entity, so who will that entity be?
I don't know, that's what, that's what we were talking about, trying to come up with one, you know, one, one entity. Did the Hamilton Cemetery Association, did, you know, somebody, you know, and that's, that's where, Mr. Chairman, you don't have to.
I guess my only point is, I'm a member of several volunteer organizations, I volunteer my time for several organizations. And when somebody comes to those organizations and says, I'm going to volunteer to do something good for your organization, we don't turn them away. That's my point.
Who's that?
And, and, and we get the staff director here, so we.
Yeah, I think so, and we.
The first one to do the survey.
We need to do the survey because we need to know what's what.
So you operate, you do the survey.
Do the survey, uh, and then, uh, yeah, we, we, and then once we do the survey, then we can look, look at that and talk to the parties involved and come up with a plan to see what do we do. But, and then also we can certainly use volunteers to help. I don't see any problem with doing that at all. All right.
Can I ask? I'd like to. Herr, could I ask a question, please? Uh, um, Ms. Langston.
No, I, 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 I don't think anything.
I'm done, Newberry.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything to gain with Newberry at this point in time, we got to do, take.
I couldn't hear what was being said, I'd like for Ms. Langston to tell me what it is we've denied a group of.
No, sir, I'm not insinuating that.
I thought that's what you said.
No, sir, I'm not insinuating that at all. This group of people has, has come to us and wants to volunteer to do something, to clean up something.
That's correct.
And we have to clean up the back part of the cemetery. They want to volun, just excuse me, they want to volunteer their time to do that. That's all they want to do.
Okay, we're not denying that.
Sorry, I'm not insinu, I don't know, I don't know anything about you. I'm not, don't know anything about your association. I'm not insinuating that. What I'm saying is, we, these people want to volunteer to do something to make the community better. And they've not been allowed to do that.
All right, this, this is getting off, off track.
Well, I just want to.
Not allowed. It, that is, I've been said, no one has, and this is a closed district at this point in time. We're going to do the survey and then we will work on, on, and then see that we get this one done. Meantime, if they want to volunteer and clean up, they're certainly welcome to do it.
Thank you.
So we need a motion to have the survey done. Got a motion that I have second. I'll second. Discussion.
How big an area would you survey?
Whatever's necessary, it is by the.
Is this at the five acre lot, is it a fifty acre?
No, I, I would not think that, is, is, is the, if you look at it on the, on the tax map and on the, on the, try to piece the surveys together, there's a small, there's a piece that, that runs, uh, I guess, north, uh, or south to north, from Barnes Mill Road, or that, close to Barnes Mill Road, from those houses that are on Barnes Mill Road, it runs north toward, toward, uh, one sixteen. That's where the Harris, where the Hamilton Water Treatment Plant is. That's the line, and then the cemetery association and that fence, that's where they, they back up to one another. Where that line is, I do not know, but we need to establish that line. So I don't think, to answer your question, uh, Jim, I don't think it's going, you know, it's, it's going to probably, the Hamilton Cemetery, it's, it's got some surveys already, you know, additions to it. It's maybe four or five acres. It's maybe four or five acres. Those lines are, are fairly easy. It's, it's where the back line is going to be. And so we're not talking, you know, thirty, forty acres, we're probably talking four or five acres.
I believe the tax records show five point oh one or something like that, so they say that...
In the, in the Hamilton Cemetery Association's where...
On the, the back, the first part, I think it's five point oh one.
Any other discussion? You're on favor of the motion to do the survey? Let me see if I raised a hand. Motion carried. All right.
Chairman, personal list that did not speak, your name, Mr. Jim Gilliam?
Mr. Gilliam.
Well, I just think the frustration lies in, I mean, maybe I don't need to say anything.
Come, come forward, please. Say your name, why don't we know your name, your address?
Three oh one Hudson Street, Hamilton. I mean, the only frustration I see, because I've kind of been an observer in all of this, is, you know, I don't think anybody has a clue as to how many people, not just from Harris County, but around the country, have complained about what the Hamilton Cemetery Association has done or has not done. But when we say, would you be willing to take it over? Would you be willing to help? Nobody wants to do anything, so we're just bombarded with people that want to tell us how to do it, but don't want to volunteer and help us do it. So that's the frustration you hear from us is that, is that. I mean, we've had a woman from Washington DC call. She said, great, we're looking for somebody to take over. Oh, no, I don't want to have anything to do with it, but, you know, so that's what the frustration is.
Hopefully we can start making some of that frustration go away by doing the survey and we can act on it. All right. Any other old business? All right, new business. We are privileged tonight to have with us Gary Jones, Fort, Fort Benning and works with Columbus Chamber, and he is here to give us tonight the Department of Defense BRAC update as it now stands in its ever-changing world. Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pass these out so everyone has an opportunity to follow along. I'm not necessarily got my tape, since it notes. I thank you for this opportunity because there, there's a big deal going on as far as the military is concerned, Department of Defense, and I'd like to try to give you an update on what is going on today. When you look at this entity, you see the, the things, the, the entities that are pulling together to work, that you obviously have Fort Benning, the Maneuver Center, the Valley Partnership, the Joint Development Authority, Fort Benning Partnership, a five oh one C three entity that focuses on Fort Benning and what it can do. The Chamber of Commerce in Columbus provides a staff for many of these entities and a newly-formed entity called the Columbus Chattahoochee Coalition, and that's a five oh one C four entity that can help communicate and tell our story. This is our area of focus when we look at Fort Benning. That basically is a thirty-five mile arc because we found that when you stood at the entrance to Fort Benning on Interstate one eighty-five, put about a thirty-five mile arc, we really found that this isn't, obviously this isn't Atlanta or Washington where we don't have ten-minute rings to travel. Thirty-five miles, still about thirty-five minutes people will travel for a good job. From the macro in, in Georgia, many people don't realize that there's almost a twenty-two billion dollar a year industry when you look at the Army, Air Force, Navy and Marine Corps. One of the things that we're very pleased with is nine of the top tens of defense contractors work out at Fort Benning, and they're all here in the Chattahoochee Valley region from a macro perspective. When you get at Fort Benning, you hear a lot of rumors, but very few people know very specifics, but on any given day, almost forty-one thousand people come to work at Fort Benning, and that does not include almost ten thousand people that are in training. So when any given day, you have a community out there of fifty thousand people coming to work. When you look at the economic impact Fort Benning has in the region, you're dealing with five point five billion dollars. Many times you'll hear people at Robbins Air Force Base say that they have the large, they have the largest economic impact in the state of Georgia. Their impact is really four point one billion, whereas Fort Benning is five point five. Perhaps some of that is lost in importance is that we're a border entity, and many of those people and those money also goes to Alabama as well. Obviously, people are familiar with base realignment enclosure and the Armor School and other entities that came here, and that the military spent three point five billion dollars upgrading Fort Benning. Fort Knox, Kentucky, had the mission to push the Armor School out. Fort Benning had the mission to receive the Armor School, and then the Valley Partnership and the Fort Benning Partnership had the responsibility to coordinate and facilitate and prepare the region for the growth that was anticipated as a result of the Armor School coming here. In that, during this time, there have been over three point six billion dollars gone into this region when you look at transportation, emergency services, public services, and so forth. Here, on this slide, you will hear the term DOD drawdown, you will hear sequestration, and you will hear BRAC, and those terms are used all interchangeably. In the black there, the Department of Defense drawdown. This will occur. By the end of September, the military, the Army will have lost eighty thousand soldiers. That's not up for debate, that's not up for dialogue, that's not up for consideration. That will in fact happen. That's a mandate. During that time, the, the Department of Defense reduced the budget by four hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars. Then we have sequestration. Sequestration went into effect when the, the, the two entities, the parties got together to try to find resolution based on the debt ceiling, and they put on top of this as a incentive to bring everybody together that said, if you don't agree on this, then we'll put sequestration into effect and cut one of the things, is we cut defense by five hundred billion. And they would also cut domestic programs over four hundred billion. That was really designed to be a gun in the forehead of the elected leadership in Washington. But they didn't come to agreement and sequestration went into effect. On one October, what will happen is that the active Army would very easily start the process of going from four hundred ninety down to four hundred twenty thousand. What that exact number is, is yet to be defined, but we know that it's going to lose five hundred billion dollars between now and two thousand twenty. When you look and go to war units, we started with forty-five combat brigades, we've gone to thirty-two by the end of October and potentially to twenty-seven. Now let's talk about BRAC, a totally different issue. There will not be a BRAC in two thousand sixteen. But for the first time, you hear the base realignment and closure issues starting to gain traction when you see bills saying, okay, we're not going to say you can have a BRAC, but we want the Department of Defense and the Army to come back and say, what are your structure plans and your infrastructure inventory? The bottom line is if the entity, the defense gets the ability to plan instead of saying no, that's the prelude to a base realignment and closure. Because the bottom line is the size of the force the Department of Defense has, the Army, Air Force, Marines. The Air Force finds itself thirty percent excess and the Army finds itself eighteen percent excess. It's got too much space for the size of the force. For those that say, ah, it's just a smoke, smoke and mirrors number, every one of those circles in red up there, a brigade that no longer exists. I'd like to emphasize it. Every place you see there, the circle in red, that brigade no longer is in the, in the door. Now, we were being looked at to lose a brigade at Fort Benning in two thousand twelve. We were able to go in and present the, our approach, showed how the military would save money, and the bottom line is we were on the line to lose almost nine thousand jobs in this region. At the end of, we not only did not lose the nine thousand jobs, we actually grew by sixty. So we're very, very fortunate in our presentation. I want to give you a couple of comparisons to show what this next cut, this sequestration could do, and first of all, I'll show about one in Columbus, and then I want to talk about specifically this county. Let's give comparison to everybody's vote. If the Army cuts what it says is going to cut at Fort Benning, almost fourteen thousand people, that's going to impact almost six hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. If you took the employees from Columbus Muskegee that Aflac has, Columbus State University, and Total System, Total, all those employees, about ninety-seven hundred folks. What that's telling you is that what's going on at Fort Benning is larger than us losing all the employees of Aflac, Total Systems, and CSU to the tune that the Army would lose four thousand jobs more than what we just described, to the tune of additional fifty-five million dollars a year in tax and salaries. But let's choke it down to this county. When you look there and you see that the Army is being, is looking to go to four ninety to four twenty, and please understand, this has nothing to do with a strategy. This has nothing to do with how you want to go to war. This has everything to do with a budget. The Chief of Staff in the Army and the Secretary of Defense have said, it's the law of the land, and if you tell me this is how much money I have, this is exactly the size force that I can afford. This is not what I want to do. This is what I've been mandated and told to do. I have no choice. It's the law. But if that happens in this region, you can see sales drop at seven hundred and twenty-seven million, salaries would lead or buying power to that amount, and you're looking at this many jobs, but once you add the children, the spouses, you're looking at potential loss of almost twenty-seven thousand people in this region. But let's choke it down to Harris County. By the way, none of these are Gary Jones's numbers. These aren't Chamber of Commerce numbers, Valley Partnership numbers, these are from the Army's statistics. So when you look at Harris County and the data that is presented there, they'll say that at this point, at the end of two thousand twelve, the snapshot says that, hey, there's about fifteen thousand folks that work here in this county. They said about one percent of that workforce is military. Take one percent, I'll round it down, let's just say it's a hundred and twenty people. The median household income is that, which, oh, by the way, is the highest of the entire MSA, and I commend you for that. When you go and take the residents and the median income, you're looking a little over eight million dollars. Now, Benning is going to lose sixty percent of the non-brigade personnel, and, and they'll, then they'll turn around and lose thirty percent of their civilians. Let's just take a mean at forty-five percent. But if you start dealing with eight million dollars a year at forty-five percent, all of a sudden, you're talking the potential buying power loss in this county of over three million dollars to you. I can deal with a half million dollars, and you're still dealing with a loss of some three million dollars in buying power in this county if we don't do something about what's about to occur. Now, here's the entities that we're working with. You've got the Fort Benning Partnership, a five oh one C three that focuses, and then we have a Columbus Chattahoochee Coalition that we're just standing up, that the five oh one C four. Five oh one C four becomes important because at some point, we have to go and we have to begin communicating with our elected leadership and say, this is not the correct thing to do. We have to turn this around. This gives you a feeling of the people that are serving on these entities. And here, Commissioner Lang is also a part of this entity as well, and you can see by looking at that, you're starting to deal with some people that have some influence in this region. But the bottom line is between the Fort Benning Partnership and the Columbus Chattahoochee Coalition that we're standing up now, that we're having the bylaws refined and that gun, so forth, we're going and we're approaching things. Now, I believe if you don't know where you're going, any road will get you there. So I just want you to see by year what we're facing with is going to be a reality around here. In two thousand thirteen and fourteen, we fought the first time they tried to come out and cut Fort Benning by some, almost nine thousand jobs, and we, we were able to win that battle, and that didn't occur. Today's challenge, we're going out there and they're saying, hey, we're looking at cutting Fort Benning's fair share is almost fourteen thousand jobs. Once you count the military, once you count the civilian, the full time civilians out there, and once you count the contractors that go out there, then what we say is we have to stop sequestration. That's the bottom line. We have fought our last tactical battle. All our battles going forward now must be strategic. They have to be fought, fought at the state level, and we're fortunate in the sense that we can apply both the state of Alabama and Georgia and their energies toward the elected leadership in Washington to go and communicate our concerns, but the biggest thing is make sure they know the facts. And we have to do this to make sure that we're going to come out because we have to stop sequestration. In two thousand sixteen and seventeen, that's just coming up, they're talking about the military going from four ninety to four seventy-five, and then when we go to two eighteen, two nineteen, it drops down to four hundred and twenty thousand. That's the roadmap, that's the glide path, that is what is going to happen if we do not stop sequestration. Simple as that, we've got to do that. Now, as they say, town's the ask. To fight this battle, I've laid out a four-year program that basically is about a one point two, one point three million dollar program. It costs a lot of money to go and communicate and articulate what we need to do to bring the staff together to start the media marketing, the media and marketing effort that's necessary. The good news is, on about a one point two budget, we've been able to get about six hundred and fifty, six hundred and sixty thousand commitment to date, but we've got room to grow. And in that, I come before this body, and I ask this body consider the payment of fifteen thousand dollars a year for four years. We found that that's much more palatable than somebody going up and say, give me fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars. I have approached other governmental entities, the Development Authority, the City Council, I have approached, I'm not to approach the Dublin County Development Authority. And so we're approaching governmental entities, we're approaching car dealerships, we're approaching those that are in the real estate world, and we're receiving support. But I think it's very, very important that we have, all have an opportunity to participate in that. I don't expect an answer to that because if I did, I wouldn't get one. You know, clearly, y'all aren't going to turn around and convince this entity to give sixty thousand dollars based on what I just did. You've got to think about it, you've got to ponder. But I would ask that you consider that. If the decision may not support a fifteen thousand, I would like you to consider supporting it the manner in which you believe appropriate. But I believe in my opinion that we need to have some, some energies and we need to have a commitment from the governments of the area to support Fort Benning. Fort Benning is terribly, terribly important. Pending your questions, I thank you for your time. And if there are no questions, that just means I gave a good briefing, and I'm not offended.
Thank you.
Gary, we've got, obviously we have a presidential election coming up next year. Does that, depending on who we elect, could that possibly have an impact on this?
Yes, sir. I, I believe that it will have a change in the dynamics and the end result. The one thing that I can guarantee, and there are very few things that I can guarantee, but I can guarantee you, if we do nothing, we will lose, and we will lose fourteen thousand jobs. That I can assure you. I'm very fortunate myself and some other people wake up every day and we... I'm very fortunate myself, and some other people wake up every day and we thank Fort Benning, Georgia. And we focus on that every day. We are making sure that we stay in sync with the commanding general because we're not gonna get in front of that major general, that two-star. At the same time, when we update him on our activities, we're not looking for approval and direction from him because he can't do that. Because that commanding general cannot pick up the phone and call a congressman. He cannot call a senator. He cannot call a representative. We have to be that voice that's going and communicating the need for the infantry and the armor and the kelp. We are not worried about Fort Benning going away. What we are worried about is mission growth that occurs out there and having missions lost. We cannot afford to deal with that, not in this region. We have, we have too many people. We have forty thousand folks come to work up here. And when they announce jobs going away, it's not as important until your name is part of that discussion. Or the court.
Thank you, Gary. Appreciate you for your time. Next item on the agenda is Alcohol Ordinance Amendment, uh, requesting the deduction of age for serving of alcoholic beverages. Mr. Woods had originally brought this forward and had it put on the agenda. Jim, is there, you wanna say on this, or?
I mean, it came to my attention that, uh, in Harris County, uh, that waitresses under the age of eighteen and waiters, waitstaff, I guess is a popular word, are not allowed to serve liquor or alcohol to the, uh, to the customers. Well, basically, what that does is it keeps all children or, you know, young adults, uh, from working in restaurants. They can be busboys, but they can't advance beyond that. And, uh, that, you know, there's, that basically, this is just trying to help them, people get a job. You know, and we're dealing in a country where juvenile unemployment is twenty-five percent. And, uh, we're contributing by not allowing them to also, to do this basic serving and pouring of alcohol to customers.
Okay, uh, what we have here is our, we have codes that.